Hello, this is the zoning board of appeals for the 12th, the 12th of September, my goodness. I am Janice Tatarca, this is John De Priest, Marilyn Vega Torres, Joe Mahoney, Hugo Perdomo, and Joan Cromwell. As I announced earlier, we will be taking things slightly out of order. And if anybody comes up to speak, please make sure you speak into the microphone, either the one that's sitting there or you pick it up, and you will be reminded if you forget. So the first case in front of us today is 2023, oh, and again, another reminder, there was no planning board last month, so the planning board has decided to refer the cases back to us. Usually a special permit has to go to the planning board and then back to us. The planning board didn't meet, didn't have a quorum, so they waived their right to hear it. So we won't be worrying about that. So 2023-17, 208, 210, 212 Cherry Street, Juan Gallego, for special permit and variance seeking approval to legally combine three lots at the below referenced addresses, or the above referenced addresses, for the construction of a 12 dwelling unit structure which does not meet the minimum requirements for open space, side yard setback, and off-street parking. So we didn't have a recommendation, so please introduce yourselves. And if anybody wants to see and can't see that, they can come stand over here if they want to see what's being presented. And this is still a public hearing and it's still open, so we're going to ask the applicant to refresh us about what he's asking for, and people will have the opportunity to ask questions. Counselor?
Good evening, members of the board. David Mindlin representing Juan Gallego, and Mr. Gallego is with me as well. Just a brief summary of the project. Mr. Gallego owns three contiguous lots on Cherry Street. They're presently used for parking for his building, which is on Fifth Street, right in the same area. This is all in the little area, the enclave behind Broadway, that used to be just broken glass strewn lots, hangouts, drug area, and Mr. Gallego and one of the other property owners in that area really trying very hard to develop it into a nice little urban enclave there. The proposal is to build 12 units, four-story building, all one bedrooms between roughly 480 square feet and 550 square feet each. The ground floor will have up to seven covered parking spaces. Now, the complication there, which we brought up at the first hearing, is that this lot is tied into the Fifth Street lot, and that 12 spaces are available for the tenants on Fifth Street. In reality, there are never more than maybe six cars parked in that area, so our proposal was to not provide parking for the new building, but to tie the seven spaces, to replace the 12 spaces for Fifth Street with the seven covered spaces, make them available for those tenants. So we did file for a modification of the special permit in those cases. Sorry, I can't see.
To make it less complicated, as I recall, it was a very complicated, this one goes here and that one goes there, and it looked like there was a much simpler solution that could have been applied.
It was, and, you know, we would yield to the board's discretion as far as that's concerned. As far as the new units, two would be affordable, and the board knows Mr. Gallego from past projects. He's provided a lot of very reasonably priced rental units for his tenants in that area and elsewhere in Chelsea. And that's basically it in a nutshell. It would be a further improvement on that area on Fifth and Cherry Streets.
John, could you remind us again how this checkers movement, this of parking, was originally proposed, and how, one, what we think, how to simplify it, and what steps needed to be taken to simplify it?
Sure. The spaces that are currently on this lot are for Mr. Gallego's building, which is actually located here on Fifth Street. And he received relief for the number of spaces that he would have needed for that building. The proposal now is to keep the number of spaces, the seven spaces that are proposed on the lot for the Fifth Street building, but have no spaces for the new building. At your last meeting, you, the board felt that that was a little convoluted, that it would be better to just allow the seven spaces for the proposed building and eliminate the parking requirement for the Fifth Street. It would require amending the special permit for the Fifth Street building, because then they would, again, they would have no parking at all. Either way, both buildings, tenants of both buildings will not be able to have sticker parking on the street. They won't be eligible because they're both receiving relief.
But we don't currently have in front of us a proposal to amend Fifth Street, correct?
We don't.
So if we don't have that proposal, then we can't, we can't doubly, we can't approve the same parking spaces for two different projects?
No, it was received with a proposal. No.
Because at Fifth Street...
We filed, I'm sorry, we filed a request for a modification of the Fifth Street special permit to remove the linkage and move the 12 spaces to seven in the new building.
But that's a...
We did file a written request.
Right, but we don't have that, do we? But we have to hear that, correct?
Yes, you would have to hear it.
Right, so it's just sort of, we're just in a position of not being able, we can't, even if we think that's a great idea and it makes sense, we can't currently now say that's okay, because legally, the requirement for Fifth Street still applies, correct?
But that your petition included a request.
Or did it include, was it, was what was filed here also a proposal?
I'm trying to remember.
It was a, it was a separate request in a, in a letter to the board.
But it was after our last hearing?
Right.
No, it was before, when we filed, we filed everything together.
To modify Fifth Street as well?
Yes. This is a copy of the request for the modification.
Is that, what's the date on that?
Is that the July 11th letter?
Yes.
Okay, John has it up there.
It's on the third page.
Okay. But just asking for that doesn't mean that we have to post that, it's a hearing. A question mark after that, but...
Well, it's a determination for me whether that's major or minor, then you, because this is a request for the modification, the process is that you'd have to determine whether that's major or minor.
Did that, okay, but I'm not seeing in front of me, in the language that's in front of us, a formal request to make that modification. That was posted and commented on, that could be posted and commented on. That wasn't part of this, again, I'm just trying to, I'm not, I'm not trying to create a problem, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, if we have something that's already still legally applicable to Fifth Street, we can't then double book it for Cherry Street.
Can we put that into one of the conditions?
Okay, let's see, all right.
Let me close that so that we'll make that larger.
So we have, but that would be a different case that we would have to vote on. Again, I...
Agreed, but it was, the request was made as part of this, so it was advertised.
But then I need, then we need a separate request in front of us to make a modification of Fifth Street. Do we, I mean, there's...
The request that was made here was to modify the Fifth Street in order to have, to be modified for the number of spaces, not the request, not your, the board's thought that the parking should be eliminated for Fifth Street, that's not what this...
No, what we filed is a request to reduce it from 12 to seven spaces.
Right, and that's, that's what this request says.
Correct.
Okay.
But what you don't have is the request to modify it, to eliminate the parking for Fifth Street in order to keep these spaces, the spaces proposed here for the proposed building, that's what you don't have.
That's what I meant.
Right, that, that seemed to be a board suggestion, not our suggestion.
No, right, but, yeah, well, all right, fine, but I just think it's silly, but, okay. Dan, any questions? Before I open it up? Oh, and Arthur Oshinoff is joining us.
So would, can I not be able to be, would you be able to share the parking lot for both properties?
No, you can, Elizabeth, I just, would you make a statement that you're recusing yourself?
Just say you're, Arthur, are you recusing yourself from this case?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur's been recused. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
So my question was regarding the parking, if both properties could park in the lot?
I'm sorry.
Like, keep Fifth Street parking, parking there, but also allow the tenants here in this building to park in the same lot, if they need parking?
My guess is that, my guess is that in practicality, it's probably going to be both, if there's any empty spaces because of the Fifth Street are not using it, I'm assuming that you'll allow the building, the owners of this proposed building, the residents of this proposed building to park there as well.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So in practicality, it's going to work out that way.
Okay.
But again, there have never been more than six cars parked there. We don't even know if there wants tenants.
I think that's fine, because there's a parking issue in the city, so, you know, the more parking that you can offer a resident, the better, so a property is fine.
All right, so, so basically, and it's, and it's not, because he owns the land, it's not a problem for us to have, have, it'd be a shared parking lot, as long as what we recognize is, on the record, only seven of those are applicable to this, in front of us. So, I mean, you know, what ends up actually practically happening, none of us will know, but right now legally you have five that are allowed there for Fifth Street, no, you have, you want to modify what's allowed for Fifth Street. Is that what we...
We still need to reduce the number required for Fifth Street from 12 to seven.
And see, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm confused about, we don't have, is that technically a modification for Fifth Street?
Yes, that was, that was, that was the, that was the modification that was requested, to reduce it from 12 to seven.
Okay, okay. So, all right, doesn't make sense to me, but, okay. Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of this. It is a, John, do you, does the department have any comments?
No. We have, we have suggestions for conditions.
What are your suggestions for conditions as we move forward?
I'm just going to pull them up. Standing conditions as applicable, design review, a lighting plan, address concerns of the historical commission, no lease, sublease or rental of less than 12 months, and tenants not eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program.
You comfortable with those recommendations if that's what happens?
Yes, we're comfortable.
Okay, let's look, let's walk through the variance requirements. We got to do that, okay? John, again, what are we looking at the variances for?
Lot size, I'm sorry, that's not true. For a minimum usable open space and minimum rear yard setback.
Okay, okay. All right, so, the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Okay, so, to begin with, the lot is oddly shaped, it's not a square or rectangle, there's a portion at the left rear, that's about 16 by 20, that's cut out, which reduces the lot size. More interestingly though, and we never want to use the word interesting in these cases, is the fact that Mr. Gallego granted an easement to Rick Costa, the abutter, which is approximately eight by 40, for keeping the, keeping his dumpster and egress from his building in a cooperative effort. So in effect, that compromised the lot size that Juan owns. In addition, the surrounding area is all built up, there's no other land available, none to be acquired, and just modern construction methods, it's really impossible to do it otherwise.
Okay. Okay. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
So the property is currently really underperforming as a parking lot, as I said, it's never fully occupied, even though the Fifth Street property has quite a few units. It's on public transportation, so the parking is not in great demand. So right now, this lot is creating a financial hardship for Mr. Gallego, he can't maximize the use of the land, and he's still paying taxes and maintenance expenses. And tying into the next two criteria, the intention of developing this lot is to provide additionally, additional reasonably priced and affordable housing for the city of Chelsea.
Yes? You double, you double counted two there. The desirable effect may be granted without substantial detriment to the public.
And so the site is readily served by adequate existing utilities, public services, and the design is within the character of the neighborhood, which is, as I said before, gradually changed from a rundown, unattractive nuisance, to an attractive urban enclave. Even though minimal off-street parking will be available, public transportation is close by and readily available.
Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Okay, so the project is in the BR zone, which incorporates dimensional requirements of R2. The intent is to provide housing, including multifamily housing. The proposed design is entirely consistent with this developing area near the Broadway Business District. Each unit will have a balcony, which will provide a significant amount of open space, and the design reflects the architecture of the neighborhood and uses materials and features consistent with other structures nearby.
People, yes, okay, good, you meet them. So, John, again, I just want to be sure, and I don't mean to be beating a dead horse, but I want to be sure that what we're voting on, so when we vote on this Cherry Street application, that that will require a modification to the, whatever's on the deed, the whatever we call it, of Fifth Street, whatever the deed modification, it will have to modify the filing at Fifth Street.
Since the request, since the petition included a request for the modification, your positive vote would in effect approve that modification.
And make, and require that change to be made at the Secretary of Deeds, or whatever they call them, the, who are, I mean, because that gets registered on the deed, right?
It does, right, so I will have to, I will have to issue a modified decision, which will have to be recorded with the Fifth Street property.
That's what I mean, okay, all right, so, okay, do we have a motion? Joe?
Make a motion that case number 2023-17 Cherry Street for a special permit and variance be approved.
With the specified or recommended specifications. Second by Marilyn, all in favor? Okay, all set?
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you. As I said, we're going to take, the next one we're going to take is 2022-01B, 244, 248 Arlington Street, La Collaborativa Inc., request for a modification to change the teaching kitchen to a community development kitchen, add two non-commercial kitchens for staff use, and replace an existing garage with an open concept gazebo. Thank you again, so thank you for coming, we knew that there was some confusion at our, well, on my part, I think, at our last meeting, that I felt that this was, and a number of us felt that this was important enough to have public weigh in, we thought whatever was proposed seemed very positive on its face, it just wasn't what we had approved. And so what we wanted to do was clarify and make sure that we were properly approving here, and also giving the public the chance to weigh in, since we've made modifications. So Anthony, it's all yours.
Hi, I'm Anthony Keles, thank you for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity and to be here in front of the board, and we're looking to modify our, our teaching kitchen to a community development kitchen. And yes, like you said, Janet, last meeting, I was a little bit out of the loop, and I had a big class on kitchen, and how it works, and I brought today Philip, who's, he's the director of workforce and development, and Caesar, who's the manager for the teaching kitchen. And after getting a class the last month of, on this whole program, I'm very happy about it. You know, I've been involved in so many, I was born and raised in Chelsea, as you know, and I've been involved since Roca with Molly Baldwin, which I love, you know, Chelsea never had developers at the beginning in 88, with so many, and now I have the opportunity to work with Roca, and I'm hoping that grassroots and other nonprofits that I can help out and be part of, it just adds to, you know, being a good person in the community and seeing how Chelsea has developed throughout the years, it's, it's just amazing, from the 70s to now. So I'm, I believe, John, did you get a PowerPoint, an email? Beautiful. I have, I'm going to present Philip White, who's our workforce developer.
Thanks, Anthony.
Introduce yourself for the record, and then...
I'm Philip White, representing La Collaborativa today. And did you get our slides through the email, John?
Did you get your slides?
I haven't received anything.
Is there...
I have nothing since June.
I sent you an email right before this meeting with the new slides, is that all right?
I've been up here since 5 o'clock, so, let me see, let me see if they've come in.
Thanks. We can plug in if not.
So while this is downloading, why don't you just, again, summarize, up here, it's already here, so, you know, use this and talk, tell us the difference between what you had originally proposed and what's going to happen here, and how...
Yeah, so, refresher on what was originally proposed, and then we'll review into the changes a little bit. So, this is the state of the survival center now, if you've driven by, our name's finally up there, and it's making some really good progress. It might not load the next slide, it's all right.
It's still loading.
Okay. So, we're encompassing three of our chief components with this center. The first is the focus of survival.
Can you pick up the microphone and speak into it a little slower?
Of course, no problem. Is that good?
Good.
Okay. So as it loads, I'll highlight our three focuses of the survival center. This is to bring all of our services under one roof, we've been operating in 318 Broadway, the Clark School, Williams, spread out across the city. This will give our members a central place to go on a schedule that we can control, and with facilities that we've designed, with their feedback very much in mind. So, our first component of the survival center is survival, in the name, that includes our most needed direct services, so that's usually food distribution, people who need food today for their families, they're in line Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you'll see them in our usual area. Also, emergency housing facilitation will be offered in this facility too. That is to get people off the street, or ideally prevent them from being evicted, but if they're in that type of survival mode, it tends to be immediate response. There's also a triage center, so anyone can walk in and tell us what is going on, we will decide whether we have services to help with that or not, and refer out as needed. Case management as well goes on, so this will be an area where members can come and get all of their services. We plan on remaining in the Broadway location for more recurring workshops and classes.
And John, the only thing we're hearing is the part relative to the kitchen, correct? Not the part relative to the housing or any of that?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah. If you can get to the third slide there, we start talking about the kitchen. So what you've heard before...
It's, it's not connected, something's going on here, hold on. Still downloading. Yeah? Try now.
Internet. It won't plug in. I can grab my laptop, but it needs to plug in.
Okay, keep going.
All right, keep going. So you've heard about the nutrition and teaching kitchen, that's the focus of our food center in pairing with the food distribution. So people are getting their meals, ingredients, a lot of produce heavy, and this is to educate people about making the healthiest meal possible with what's in our box that day, that week, because it does change based on what we can source. But the food distribution team, the food pantry team, has been working extremely hard to secure local partnerships with farms who have excess food, so that has become a steady stream, and that will be a highlight of the nutrition and teaching kitchen component, sourcing local ingredients, cheap ways to do that, creative ways to get the most nutritious meals. Also, there will be a dietitian on site, so the dietitian will instruct people on preparing those meals, traditional ones as well, so how to make an empanada slightly less bad for you. We don't want to change from cultural conditions, but this is to help people change their meals to have a little less trans fats, less carbs, and get people into a more healthy lifestyle or at least thinking about it.
And that was the original focus of what you brought to us, was creating a kitchen for teaching people how to eat, to cook healthy, eat healthy.
Exactly.
So that was the original proposal, and then you've, since then, made some modifications, so that's great, so that's what we're here to talk about.
So in that process, a lot of positive feedback, people were excited about the opportunity to come in and cook, there's a small, it was designed to have a few stations so people can practice, kind of like you see on teaching shows, follow the, follow the instructor. And with that, a lot of them started to reveal that they were running businesses out of their homes, cooking, the recipes that we're talking about, they were like, oh, I have something similar and I sell it quite a lot. So that is a consideration that we wanted to loop in, since this facility is a central location, and a big theme of it is economic empowerment. So, you didn't get to see my cool little slides, but empowerment is the last component of our stabilization effort. So once someone has housing, they're secure, they have food, they likely have a steady job before they are involving in this type of venture, because it's a risk, or they've been running this at home. This is the more creative aspect, so they can gain some equity in their community, have financial independence, and not be as sensitive to the massive food service unemployment that we saw during COVID.
So what, again, and let me just, I'm trying to summarize a little bit, so what you're trying, so your original proposal was meant to be a, let's, let's learn how to cook and eat well.
Yep.
Now what you've done is, is you've modified that to include also a, what did we call it, an incubator set of kitchens?
Yes.
Incubator kitchens, where people can learn how to properly create the things that they've been maybe doing in their homes or whatever, sell them, figure out how to package them, and with the plan to get them to financial independence with that particular product, move them out, bring somebody else in.
Precisely, yep. And the nutrition component will be involved, we're not going to try to change people's family recipes, but that is a token of this operation.
Oh, taste is good then.
Yeah, obviously, our taste is the priority, but we're going to try to infuse it a little bit there, there's business training involved, we have reached out to the expert kitchens in the area that already are doing this, and we're heavily informed by their business models. And a lot of this is purely a product of members asking for it, and the risk that we were identifying in them. So if someone's coming in because their utility bill is extremely high, because they're cooking for 300 people, catering on the weekends, that's not something we can mitigate with the services that we have right now, but this type of facility, this type of empowerment gives them the resources they need to take that out of their house, reduce the fire risk, reduce your utility costs, and get some permits and licenses and actual safe food handling training.
And remind us, how many stations, if you will, do you see at one, on one particular day or one particular time, however you decide, is it, you know, somebody comes in each day?
Right now, it is slated for three chefs, entrepreneurs, to be cooking at the same time. That will be at a max of about five hours of contiguous reservation time, and then the next group can come in. There will be exceptions, so if someone has a big event, we can stretch it out, but overall, those will be the blocks. We don't want it to be overcrowded, and those businesses, if there's one business with one chef and another with two, they could share the time as well. So the space is laid out that they can either work as two smaller independent groups totaling three, or a group of three as one business.
And, and it's still your intent to do the, the teaching as well?
Yes.
And, and that would be not simultaneously, I assume you would have different days for that, or would it be simultaneous?
Technically, it could be. Um, so there's a separation if it eventually loads. I have some printouts for you later too.
The floor plan that, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yeah, you had the floor plan.
The floor plan that, uh, that you had will show the teaching kitchen and the development.
Yeah.
Well, it's all.
Yeah.
It's two separations. Can, can I?
Yeah, go print it that wall.
But you just take the microphone with you. Anthony, take the microphone with you.
There you go.
So basically, um, our commercial component of the kitchen is here and then this is the classroom. So, we do have a big counter here and the students that are gone, this age students that are, the maximum, it's eight students and the teacher will be here. So, it's possible that you have three chefs over here and, and a class of eight students over here.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's how it works. Thank you.
And to fit that capacity right now, um, we're targeting a cohort ideally of about twelve. So they could share the space in a timely manner and accommodate schedules because we know weekends tend to be busier for type of catering orders. Um, and there will be a stepped rate. So, once they reach a certain revenue threshold, likely will not happen within the first year, they'll start to pay ten dollars an hour just to help offset the costs because with their increased revenue, increased traffic and use of the space. Also to build ownership, so when they graduate from our facility and they have all their trainings and service knowledge, that they're not just out into the world paying an extremely high rent that they're not used to. Uh, it is very guided and staged so that they are dipped into the waters of full food service and hospitality rather than just diving straight into a triple net lease.
I wanted to say something real quick. So, eh, the pilot at the beginning, it's one year and basically that, that first year, that, that group of twelve, uh, there's gonna be no fees. It's, um, it's the following year that we're gonna have that ten dollar an hour. And the reason we're doing that is for commitment, one for commitment and those fees are gonna be used to subsidize the maintenance of the kitchen. It's really, really small fee, but we have to kind of make the person understand that you're paying this little fee, but you're committed to this class, you know, to, to this, you know, it's important.
It gives you time to work out the quirks, because I'm sure there'll be some quirks.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so during that time, um, they are going through business training and developing a business plan that's sustainable. They're fleshing out their menu to make sure we don't have too many repetitive menus. They're differentiating from other entrepreneurs in the area so we can cover more than Chelsea. And they are also getting a lot of food specific handling, training and credentials. Um, I'm gonna let Cesar speak about that because he's our kitchen expert.
Good afternoon, I'm the kitchen manager in La Colaborativa. I'm in charge of training the people, uh, getting the license for them, uh, making sure everybody had the, uh, correct training and all certifications. Uh, also, I will be there, uh, supporting them, helping with their food, uh, making sure everybody are cooking in good way. And, and develop, eh, sorry, doing, doing the good job in the, in their business, you know what I mean? So, I'm trying to get the best people there with all certification and good education on the kitchen.
So, it, it's not only, um, and this is one of the parts that I really like, it's not only about the kitchen, it's about the business development side, understanding how to open your business. Are you opening an LLC, are you opening an incorporated, a corp? All these, there's gonna be courses for people to understand, you know, QuickBooks. And, you know, so it's just not the cook, cooking component, but also the teaching how, how to handle a business. And if you're ready to, ready to go to that step, you know, and that's, that's very important. If, do you have any other questions?
Do you have questions? I have a couple more, but you guys have any questions? Go ahead, come here, I'm, no, no, go right ahead.
So, I, I have a question about like the food, like once the food is prepared, is there, is it gonna, do they store it there? Do they keep it in the facility?
So, because.
Or do you take it out to sell it or?
So, because there's twelve, so, I'm gonna go back to the floor plan. So we have twelve bins and then we have a freezer and a cooler with, uh, ten bins each. Meaning that, you know, some people will be, someone who's could probably has a cookie business, you know, that you don't need the cooler or the freezer. So, and, and there, that's gonna be the max, that space is the max of food that they could put in store there and that, that's it. So, because this program is, is actually built for training purposes, how to, you know, get your certification and understand how to run a business. If you're growing at a rapid pace, then it's time to fly.
Right. And regarding the, you had mentioned, just to clarify, three chefs at a time?
Yes.
For five hours, do they share the space?
That's max.
They share the same space?
So, they, they share the same space, but there is multiple stoves and, and, and equipment, so. Yeah, which is, 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 I, I.
So it's big enough to?
To, to hold.
So no one is in their, each other's way?
That's correct.
They have their own?
That's correct.
In their operations, I will be there for make sure, um, they, they keep everything away for the allergens or something. Uh, I, I'm making sure about that because I have the, I have the certifications for, for be there training and coaching the, the chefs.
Okay, thank you. And, and then two more questions. The educational part, the business part, is that all year long or is that a specific amount of weeks?
So, right, he can, because we currently do that.
Okay.
So, this is a continuation of entrepreneurial components that we've had. Specifically with childcare before has been our focused venture. This is a fourteen week intensive business training specific to food service, um, for ready to eat production. So it is not for packaged food, this is, you're preparing a large volume to deliver that day, the next day for a catering event. So there are a lot of logistics and operations and procurement specifically that, um, like I have no idea about. So we'll be bringing in, uh, trainers who are experienced in that, Cesar being one of them, um, to help people through that process so that there are no huge barriers when something comes up. If they get an order for three hundred dishes, we want them to be prepared to do that. They might not be prepared before that fourteen week bootcamp is over, uh, but it will give them all the skills that they need to scale it and take it to longevity, whether that is achieving a brick and mortar location in a year, two or three, or joining another business because there's, wasn't viable for whatever reason. Ideally, everyone is prepared with all of those skills regardless of what they choose to do afterwards. Maybe they decide food service is not for them. Um, this would be the place for them to do that rather than get stuck with a ten year lease.
Thank you.
So, so it's, 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 it's a stepping stone.
Yes.
Any, Hugo?
The garage, when you say replacement, that means tear down the garage?
That's correct. That's correct.
And you have any plans, what are you gonna do with the opens?
Yeah, I think, didn't, wasn't that?
Isn't that already done?
Yeah, that's all, no, no, it's not built or anything like that. But I, I thought that was, um, was that approved as a minor modification prior to this? The gazebo, the gazebo.
The gazebo was approved by the planning board because that is, that is a site plan issue, it's not a use issue.
Yeah.
So it goes, uh, the zoning board has a.
So we're not voting on that?
Yeah, so we're not voting on the gazebo.
You're voting solely on the kitchen.
Okay.
I got a hard, hard time understanding the teaching, uh, and the community, um, difference.
The what? I'm sorry?
Hard time understanding the teaching part that we approved before to the community kitchen now. Can you?
So the, the difference is the teaching kitchen was specifically teaching. You have a teacher, you learn recipes, you understand how to cook healthier. Now, the community development kitchen is an entrepreneurship, it's an incubator for people that want to start their own business.
So you're gonna rent in the kitchen?
No, we, we don't, we're not gonna rent no kitchen. So basically, the first year, it's gonna be a pilot and the second year, we plan to charge ten dollars. It's, it's.
But the people will use it, will have to know how to cook or?
No, these are people that are under the program, these twelve people that are gonna be under this program, okay? They get to, they get to choose, uh, use the kitchen for a max of five hours, no more than five hours.
So they're, so one is, one is just teaching people how to cook healthy and from, this is what I'm thinking.
That's correct.
And the, now they've added a component that says, geez, you know, people are, are making food products for sale or distribution in their own homes. Let's let them come in, teach them how to make sure that they're, they're properly certified, make sure that they're properly, you know, sanitizing and sterilizing and all of that kinda stuff. And they would be there and do it here and figure out, oh, this is how I do it. I, I think, you know, that's what I think it's, and so instead of going to rent a place that it's too expensive because they're just starting out, this gives them a chance to make their cookies and sell them.
And they will graduate with a.
Uh, introduce yourself formally, Gladys.
I'm sorry?
Introduce yourself.
Ah, Gladys Vega from La Colaborativa, executive director. And this was, would also allow them to have a business plan. And we would help them also with the marketing. So it would be complete, the, the, the whole, sort of like part of the project is basically to create small business in the community that they're able to make it the correct way. Right now, you go to some of the houses, they have two refrigerators in an, um, in an outlet or an extension cord. And what we wanna be able to do is, you know, you can stop doing that, come to La Colaborativa, go through the training for one year, two, twelve individuals, it may be that one is almost ready to open their own business. They don't have to use the whole year, but they can get all their certification and they can participate in the bootcamp that allows them to get all their certification for cross contamination, for whatever, so that they can do it better and they can create their own business and they can be financially free.
And they actually open up an entire market, because if they're not properly certified and if they're not properly making their foods then they, they're very limited into where they can actually sell their products.
And the teaching kitchen has two nutritionists, two paid nutritionists from MGH that would help with issues of diabetes. So the teaching kitchen is extremely different. Think about a Martha Stewart kitchen, that's on the other side. This other side that we began this entrepreneur kitchen is basically to do the commercial, the commercial kitchen.
Two different locations.
So Hugo, just, just to, to go over it, I, I think you get the gist of it, right? So, we already have approval for the teaching kitchen, so we wanna modify it to bring the development side into it, to give that opportunity. And I'm a witness to this and I don't wanna say the name, I've been to a home where, um, this person makes pupusas, you know, and she makes it and she sells them. And I'm looking at the conditions and I'm like, oh my God, this is, you know, and people are eating this? So, this gives that opportunity to that person to understand how the business works and give them the opportunity to really, if that's what they wanna do and, 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 and work, then give them the opportunity. It's a really great thing in my eyes to, to give the, the community, especially in Chelsea, that opportunity of growing and expanding, you know, what they do, what they love to do. You know, and the kitchen side, besides the kitchen, like I said, the business side is very important because some people will like to cook and maybe you're meant to be a, a chef at a restaurant and not a business owner. So while you go and train, your mind might change and say, oh my God, I got, I need an accountant, I gotta pay taxes, I gotta do this. And they might say, you know what, I just wanna be a chef. So, and this will help people develop their skills, their whole total knowledge. That's why this, after this thirty days of training has, it has me wilded out. I love it and I hope you, you, and you give us the opportunity of bringing this to the community.
Any other questions? Well, I, I have one about, so how are, so we're talking about a lot of product. So I, I, you guys, if somebody's making cookies, for example, who's bringing the flowers and chocolate chips? Are they bringing them or are they getting delivered to your, to?
So, I'm, I'm gonna put Phil.
So they'll be delivered, uh, but it is up to the entrepreneur to receive that, to sign for it and to store it.
And how will they be delivered? What's the, what's the, how, what's the flow?
That, um, that back bay door.
So basically, we have, we have, um, uh, let me see, so right here, so this is the entrance. This is, this is a sixth, uh, Sixth Street and this is Arlington Street. So basically, all deliveries, everything, even from, uh, the, um, I, I, I can't get the name, um, all deliveries is gonna be on this side right here.
Is that with the same, so the deliveries for the people who are getting the foods?
Everything's just one place.
And, and that's the only place, and John, is Sixth Street, I know there were concerns about doing it on a street that would impact.
Arlington.
Yeah, there was a concern that, uh, when your original design for this building previously included a garage entry on, uh, the Arlington Street side and there was a concern that any loading or unloading on Arlington Street, since Arlington Street is a one way from Sixth to Hurd, would force any trucks or vans, uh, through the residential neighborhood on Hurd Street. But now that, uh, design has changed, so all deliveries are on Sixth.
We, we scratched that out just because of the impact that might have on Arlington. So we scratched that out and that's why we took the garage down and now we, we wanna do the gazebo. And, uh, just strictly, and, and, and one of the things that, you know, I, I get worried when I hear delivery, I see in my mind eighteen wheelers and all that. No, at this time, the collaborative has a box truck and they're gonna pick up. You know, most of the foods that come to the pantry, they come into the box truck, they park here and, and there's a whole, and I'm hoping that, you know, the board goes and visits us. This is all set up with, uh, to put pallets and all that on this side. So, it's, it's minimal impact, I think.
And the deliveries for the kitchens would come?
That is correct. Everything's getting delivered right there. And from there, we'll distribute it to, right to the kitchen through here.
Are there any questions? I'm gonna open this to the public, oh, I'm sorry, Joan, I didn't realize you had any, I apologize.
So, I love the concept, it's, it's great, teaching kitchen, kitchen's perfect. And that side, it seems like you have it nailed down. Um, but the entrepreneur side, I know that as you go, it'll improve. You'll see where the glitches are and if they can be fixed, because I see a lot of glitches. Um, with that said, you had said that the, um, so a person coming in cooking, if they're cooking in their own, their home, they already have their business, you know, it might be shady environment, things like that. And you wanna provide that opportunity for them to learn how to produce a healthy, safe environment to, to.
That's correct.
Whoever's buying it. So with that said, prior to them, if you know they, their, um, um, habits on sanitary or things like that where they're cooking now, and there, are they receiving all of these classes prior to producing that product to continue to sell? So they're gonna put their business on hold for, I heard twelve weeks, I heard fourteen weeks and then I heard a year. But whatever that timeline is, um, their production stops while they learn how to produce a healthy product, right? Is that the case? Are, are they coming in with all their goods in tow, which usually, um, this type of a kitchen is like a ghost kitchen? So you have stations set up and they're coming in with all their products to cook? They have their own stove, they have their own refrigerator, they have their own station. So there's no cross contamination of other products coming in from other people since it seems like it's revolving use of the stations.
So, so basically, um, it's, it's all one kitchen, that's why we maxed it at three. So, nobody steps over, it's, it's a big, uh, square footage there, so they don't trip on each other and whatnot. Now, the certification, and, and, and I'm gonna pass it to Caesar.
So in terms of the station, so there's three different stations that each entrepreneur person has their own space to produce their product, right? So they, they're not, um, crossing the foods over and things like that.
Who put Caesar?
Thank you. Even, even on the restaurants, uh, we had to take care with the allergic people, right? Even we had many stations in the back, in the back of the, back of the house. Uh, nobody really, really knows how it works, right? But, uh, the thing I can ask for the members is if you are attending any party, you have to keep the list of the person with the sun allergens problem, you know? And in that way, in that way, we, we had to teach them how they had, how they need to cook the, the food for that person. When some people is allergic, we had to cook on the side with different, uh, with different supplies, with different board, with different knives, different pots, you know? But, to be honest with you, about the cross contamination for bacteria or, or everything, all that stuff, we had to make sure everyone had the correct training for avoid any problem. Uh, the only, the only problem with the cross contamination in the charity kitchen may are the allergic persons. But for the allergic, allergic persons, we had to cook on the side, we had to keep a specific place for them. And I will be make sure about that.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So, not so much allergies and maybe this isn't within our scope. So I just wanted to just get a broad sense of, of, um, the purpose because it's not so much allergies, but just foodborne bacteria. And in terms of delivery, how that's set up, um, when you said each person, each, um, person is bringing, having their food deliver, that's a huge task. So I wonder how that's even really gonna be managed in terms of the delivery bay. So I wonder how that's even really gonna be managed in terms of the delivery bay, um, and it just isn't really adding up, but I get that it's in motion, so that's why I was asking.
Right, right now, for example, many people are cooking from home, many people are selling food from home, and even some of them don't have the experience for, for the food code or the, or the safe regulations. And the idea is everyone using the kitchen had all certification. We had to do all training for them. I, I had to make sure everybody are doing the good way, even I will be present there every time when they are cooking. So, uh, my responsibility is making sure everything are running in good way.
Thank you, I respect that. And I was just wondering, in terms of the delivery of the food for each individual, how do, are they responsible for their own food, bringing it in, right?
Yeah, exactly, everybody, e- e- every member had to be there when the delivery are coming, but even if they, if they cannot go to there, they had to send the image to the kitchen manager in this, in this moment, in this moment in my position, and I can, I can make sure the recei- receiving the produce will be there in the correct place, because every, every space in the dry storage, cooler, or freezer, had their locks, and every, everybody had different, different cases for them.
This is not a bring your food from home type of situation either. Uh, so no, like maseca that's been sitting in your cabinet for a year, unknown amounts of time. This is about getting to know your procurement process. This is a new space, you're operating as if you're in a restaurant, rather than your home, so home ingredients won't be allowed to enter the kitchen. They can bring some special blender, different appliances that are very thoroughly cleaned to proper specifications, but outside ingredients won't be coming in, they'll all be processed through our delivery.
Through, uh, through the company that you guys work with, or?
Through our delivery process, through the bays. So the entrepreneur will have to be there to receive that food, or ingredients.
So where's the food coming from?
Uh, different wholesalers.
Are they purchasing the food and then having it delivered there?
Different ingredients from wholesalers, yeah.
From distributors.
Don't talk without the microphone.
From different distributors, just like a restaurant, y- you know, you order, you know, five pounds of whatever flower, and they deliver it. So the responsibility of the entrepreneur is to be there when this delivery gets there. Obviously, we only have a limited space in the lockers and in the freezers, and that's all the amount of space that they're allowed through that program.
Marilyn, is it Joan, you okay? Marilyn, question?
Do the hours of operation change?
The hours, they're gonna be the collaborative operation, which is eight to six, I think it's, eight to six, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, eight to six.
Yeah, that's correct.
Marilyn, so just following up on what she, what she asked, like sanitation, do you have like a cleanliness program that you're gonna be doing?
Absolutely.
Pest control management kind of thing? You're gonna have all of that set up?
As we speak, we have pest control right now in the building. Um, so we're gonna have professionals here, obviously. Uh, he's, he's a professional manager of the kitchen, but when it comes to, um, all the self-service training, those are professionals that are come, coming into the collaborative, they're, they're gonna do all the training, you know? So I, to, to answer to specific how the training works, I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you, I don't know how it works, but everybody that goes there and starts using the facility has to have this level of training already accomplished. So it might be like, when they get OSHA certified, it's ten hours, okay? So if they're doing whatever they're doing at home, that you gotta take, if you're gonna come into this program, you gotta get these ten hours to come in order to, to start the program. So that's how it works.
The only thing that I wanted to add was that, like, um, well, and not, not Anthony, Philip, Philip mentioned, is that at times it could be someone that is already in the restaurant business, and they have the experience, so they don't need the one year. Uh, we just want to begin with a cohort of twelve individuals that we hold on to that calendar, make sure that only three individuals are on site. Also, when it comes to the, the whole delivery system, it's part of their training, they're responsible. If I'm doing a catering business for a three fifteen on Saturday, my delivery is gonna come. If, if nobody put it away or you're not attentive to it, it's your loss, we're gonna toss it, because cross-contamination or some type of bacteria, et cetera. Also, in the freezers, we have a hundred, a one hundred and plus manual that talks about how, how long items can be in the freezer or in the fridge. So we're literally, we're, you're coming in, um, raw, and we're making raw decisions in order for us to teach you that this is how, um, would you gonna conduct business, how you're gonna be trained, and how you're gonna succeed if you follow all the regulations. We had made a huge investment in that building. The least of, you know, uh, uh, well, the problems that we want is rotting, infestation, roaches, et cetera. Right now, we're not there, and we have two contracts for pest control because of the construction.
Any other questions before I open it to the public?
So it's gonna be a well-managed system by professionals.
You're not the public, let me open it up.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Joan.
So, with the training and the certification.
Yes.
At the end of the road becomes a person, a resident that's ready and, and has all the papers in order to become established businessperson, entrepreneur.
That's correct, if they complete the program, yes, yes.
Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? This will be your only opportunity. All right, you first, I saw you first, sorry. Talk, make, announce yourself and talk into the microphone, please.
Hello, hi, my name is Teneri Garcia. I am a city council for District Four, but I am, and also, um, Gladys Vega is my niece, a my niece. My aunt, full disclosure, um, but I am here as an entrepreneur. I am here as a restaurant owner. Um, I started my restaurant from scratch, and I know how difficult it is, and I've also seen the conditions that my, um, friend here, Anthony Keelis, has mentioned, um, roach-infested apartments who are selling pupusas and other items out of their homes. And as an entrepreneur, and knowing that this program is gonna be available for our community and Iowa residents, knowing the struggles that I went through as an entrepreneur from scratch, I, I was fully excited and, and thrilled when this project was mentioned, and I feel like this, this is a pilot program that will expand the horizons to many of our residents and many of our struggling, single moms who are trying to make it, you know? Um, and that was me, and it was hard for me, and, and to have a program that will offer these for ten dollars, um, I, I would have died for this program years ago for me, and I didn't have that. So, um, I'm here in support, obviously, but, um, yeah, I just, I just think that this is fully needed in our community and our struggling immigrant, um, hard-working community. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Uh, Carl Allen, City of Chelsea, Department of Housing and Economic Development. I'm this month, it's the Senior Urban Planner for Economic Mobility. And I've had the pleasure of working with these people over the past year and a half, getting together the expertise needed to develop a business plan and to create the concepts, uh, based around this. This is addressing a critical need within our community that is really not met unless you want to travel to Dorchester. And we want to bring it here and make it culturally relevant for the people who are living here. We've seen repeatedly, as places have closed, for example, when Tito's, uh, shut down, there was an entire staff of wonderfully skilled women, um, who knew how to bake and had no opportunity to convert that skill set into a business that could support their families. And this is creating the nexus to allow that to happen and addressing some of the critical public health issues that have been mentioned already. Um, a lot of this is already happening within the informal economy, and we want to give people a really easy path to legitimize it, to learn how things are done in the States, because they're often different than the countries they came from, and how to comply with the public health laws here. I urge you to support this petition affirmatively, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? I'm gonna close the public participation portion of the hearing. John, does the planning board have any comments?
Planning board has no comments on it.
I mean, the planning department?
The planning department has, uh, is following, uh, proposed conditions, that all existing conditions of the permit remain, that there be no loading or unloading from the Arlington Street or rear of the building, no parking of trucks or rear, or vans in the rear of the building, uh, no commercial signage without review by the ZBA's agent, and a permit is issued only to La Collaborativa and cannot be transferred without the review approval of the ZBA, which may or may not include a public hearing process.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion to, on this modification? John, Joe?
Make motion regarding case number twenty twenty-two dash one B, uh, two forty-four, two forty-eight Arlington Street or Collaborativa, uh, to approve their request.
As, and with the conditions recommended by John?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Are all in favor? Go do a good job.
Thank you so much, and I, and I really, really would love the board to visit us. It's gonna be a beautiful thing.
Have fun at Chelsea Day on Sunday.
Thank you.
Was that Chelsea Day on Saturday? Hugo? Bye-bye. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna continue to take things out of order and shake them up. Bob, are you here? You're gonna go next, since you waited till the very end for the last time. So, twenty twenty-three eighteen sixty-five Summit Ave. Bob Collins for special permit seeking approval for the driveway opening permit which does not meet the requirement for front yard setback at the premises. You wanna, you wanna, and as I recall, it's you wanna, it's a one-for-one, you're gonna be opening a driveway.
Yes.
And you will be taking one car off the street.
One my car. I have tenants upstairs, they're gonna stay parking on the street.
And, um, and this in part, and, and this, you're, you're, this is located near the Rose Soldiers' Home, so this ensures that you have.
It's the outpatient parking lot where I've been parking for the last fifty years with the construction going on there, with nine units of townhouses. I'm sure I'm gonna have to move, so I wanna be proactive and move now, although the project at the home probably will not get to that, that stage for another two or three years, but I wanna get it done now. Right now, it's used as a, the land is used as a small vegetable garden, which will have to go, and I'm gonna put in a twelve-by-twenty-foot asphalt spot.
For your parking spot. Any questions? Um, this is still a public hearing, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm closing the public participation portion. John, planning department, any comments?
We do have our proposed conditions. Uh, standard conditions is applicable and occupants not eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program.
So you can't participate in the sticker parking program, but you have a parking spot, so hopefully that's not a problem. Are you good with those conditions?
Positively.
Any, do I have a motion? Arthur makes a motion, too?
To accept, uh, the, uh, special permit for twenty twenty-three dash eighteen sixty-five Summit Ave.
Do I have a second on that approval? Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
See why I took that first, because he didn't even have to go through variance requirements. Next, twenty twenty-three fifteen, one sixty-five Hawthorne Street, Acquisitions Division LLC, for special permit and variance seeking approval to establish six new residential units and reducing the number of existing rooming house SRO units from eighteen to twelve rooming, rooming units by constructing, by construction, constructing a rear addition and stairs which does not meet the minimum requirements for side yard setback, rear yard setback, usable open space, and off-street parking lot. In addition, residential units on the ground floor in the retail business districts shall only be allowed by special permits.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman, Members of the Board, Anthony Ross, and we have the petitioner. I do also have the petitioner president, Mr. Rick Costa, who's also the owner of the LLC, that is the potential buyer to this property. And I do also have the actually owner of the property who's in the audience, uh, Mr. Rizzo.
Anthony, get a little, yeah.
I'll take it up. Um, if I may, I, I know this was presented at the last meeting, and also this already went through the planning board. My understanding, I wasn't present, because I was away, but if I'm incorrect, John, I think the planning board did approve this project?
The planning board, uh, did not, did not have a quorum.
Oh, didn't have a quorum, okay.
So they just waived the, uh, right to review it.
Okay, sorry, I apologize. Um, briefly, so this is an existing eighteen-room rooming house. Um, I provided, um, John, with the floor plans, the existing floor plans, I'm not sure if they can post them on this. Um, so if you look at these units, they're very small rooming house units, and more importantly, the hallways are only about two feet wide, twenty-five inches, um, by the plants. I've spoken to the building inspector, they certainly wouldn't meet today's requirements and certainly wouldn't be ADA compliant, because they're literally the side, the wi- as wide as my, uh, my body, standing straight. My client's proposing to keep it as eighteen, but instead of having eighteen rooming house units, it'll be twelve rooming house units and six residential, uh, units on the property. Uh, extensively, there's a retail component on the first floor, he's gonna convert the retail component to make that into six residential units, and the eighteen rooming house units to redesign it to be ADA compliant, uh, code compliant, and make those into twelve units, which is why he's taking those eighteen and making them, um, in today's code habitable. Um, I know there was issues, um, on the last meeting that Carl brought up as individual, not as representative of the city regarding, you know, displacing tenants and so forth. No matter what happens here, this building will be renovated, it has to be to, to be compliant for today's standards, and certainly, this is not the intention. I believe, um, my client worked with, uh, prior, uh, town manager, Amazino, and I believe he wrote a letter of support in the last meeting, should be on record. He's, my client converted multiple rooming houses throughout the city and made them into beautiful buildings throughout Chelsea. And, I mean, Amazino tried to push my client to try to buy this building, it was one of the spots that they really wanted to try to get back to today's standards, the way he did the other rooming houses. I will state that, um, I did a brief history on this property just to see, because I was told there was, um, many innumerable complaints and violations at this property in relation to police coming to the property for disturbances over the years. It consisted of assault and batteries, harassment, threats, um, wellness checks for people living there, and I do have a copy of it, it goes for the last, I only went back for the last couple of years, and I can certainly pass it along to the board. It consists of, um, fifty-three incidents in the last, uh, two years, so it's almost, uh, one every two weeks at this property. There's no leases on this property, uh, there are tenant wills, some people are day tenants, essentially what a rooming house is, and some people are month-to-month, but there's no leases here. So all my clients essentially trying to do is, is to make this a code-compliant building and make it a nicer building. It's still gonna be eighteen units, but in order to make those, um, twelve, eighteen units that existing, he's gonna make those into twelve rooming houses, he has to make these larger, better, when I say better, I mean code-compliant, not two-foot hallways, forty-eight-inch hallways, ADA-compliant buildings, sprinkler building, addressable fire alarm systems. And this is what he's done in every one of the rooming houses that he's done and transformed in Chelsea. And he has, I don't speak for it, and John can talk about it, in the cities, well, in Tom Amazino's, wherever, his buildings are five-star rated buildings. It's not to get five-star rated tenants, he likes to deliver a buil- a building that's code-compliant, that people can be proud of and the city of Chelsea is proud of. He recently did the building right across the street from City Hall on the corner, this brick building here, they added the story, if you look at it, you think it's been like that for a hundred years. I mean, this is what he does, uh, and that's what he wants to do here. As far as, and I want to take briefly on the violations, one of them is a special permit for parking, because once you trigger a change of use, it triggers a parking violation. So it's still eighteen units, but now it cause, this is a special permit for twenty-one parking space relief. There is no parking there, it's, it's never been like that, it's still gonna be eighteen units, and that is a special permit, so there's certainly nothing detrimental to the neighborhood, it's still the same amount of units. In fact, I, I state that sometimes more transient housing cre- creates more of a parking issue, but nevertheless, as this board is aware, there's a restriction, once you do the change of use, that comes with every approval, that they can't, aren't eligible for stickers anyways, so that certainly won't make it detrimental, because in our. so that certainly won't make it detrimental, because they're not eligible for stickers. And the other violations for the variances, essentially dimensional regulation violations, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback. This is an existing structure. These setbacks, these violations are in place because that's what the building was built on, you know, 50, 60, 70 years ago. There's nothing you can do, that's what the footprint sits on, but when you change a use, you trigger violations for today's standards, and that's essentially what the variances are for, are dimensional regulation violations. And I'm trying to give a little brief synopsis, but we already went through this last time, so.
John, do you have any pictures of the proposed front?
I'm sorry, there was no front, I'm sorry, it was just a side and rear, side.
What's the, what's the, what's the front of the building going to look like? So right now, this is going where Campari Market, Campari Market is, right?
It's adjacent to Campari Market.
Let's compare, okay, adjacent to.
And my client will be doing the whole entire building over, so, and he does it from exterior to interior, and if you look at the other ones he did around the corner, the rooming houses, they, he bricked them, he changed them, he did them all outside and inside, brand new. So he spends far more than most people would do in developing, because he doesn't sell his properties, he keeps them. This is something that is, his daughter, who recently just graduated, Babson, is working for him now, this is something that's going to be a family business for years.
So is this the front view, or is this the, what's the view that I'm looking at?
This is the front.
That's the front.
That's the front view.
That's what I thought, okay.
This is the side facing the old post office, and this is the rear.
Right, so it's that, yeah, okay, all right, I get it.
Correct. Now, I'll certainly answer any questions that the board may have, but I just wanted to, you know, bring everything back.
Questions?
I have a question. What's the concept of like, not keeping it all like rooming board, but just creating apartments, and what size apartments will those be?
So they're all going to be essentially one-bedroom.
They're all one-bedrooms.
When I say one-bedrooms, like a studio type apartment, enough to put a bed in there, a little kitchenette, and a bathroom, instead of sharing bathrooms and so forth. That's what he did in the other rooming houses, so essentially, the reason why he couldn't do 18 is that, as you can see right now, it's 18, they have two-foot hallways, they're sharing a bathroom, you know, sharing everything like that, and it just, it just doesn't work.
Yep.
And what he's done in the other rooming houses, which he's been successful on, is to build these type of small micro units that are rooming house units, that people feel more comfortable being in and safer in, because they don't have to share a bathroom or what have not with other people, and also to make it code compliant, egress-wise, and, because once you touch it, you've got to make it by today's standards, and by today's standards, a two-foot hallway certainly is not compliant, so that's why he has to do it in this manner.
But today, there's 18 units, and when you do your modification, there'll be 18 units.
Well, yeah, it's 18, but 18-rooming houses, that's going to be converted to 12-rooming houses and six residential units. So basically, just to make you understand, where the 18 units currently is now, that same square footage, we now will be 12-rooming houses, and where the retail component is, that'll be converted to six micro, essentially, units.
So they're like studios, like large-sized studios?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And this building is not like a historical building, is it? Because it's kind of like a landmark, or it's like in Bellingham Square, and it is?
It is considered a historical building. It is also in an historic district, the historical commission will have a say on the design of the building, and there was some discussion of this relative to this at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I will tell you that my client was working with historical even on the building that was across the street, that's why he recreated the lintels and the sign across the street to go with historical, so he has no problem, no objection to work with historical with this project, and he's well aware that he, he's required to do so.
Relative to the historical design, a concern for the loss of that storefront on the Hawthorne Street, with the replacement with just a blank wall, which one, you lose some of that activity on the street, but also, a blank wall is going to invite graffiti, so. The historical commission has a definite concern about losing that storefront and creating a blank wall on Hawthorne Street.
And certainly, my client will cooperate with historical regarding any comments they've had, and we've done that in the past, like he did across the street, and he certainly would do so on this one.
So, so from our perspective, if we approve this, then we would leave, but design would be decided between you and the historic commission, between the board and the planning department and the historic commission?
Yeah, if that works for the zoning board, yes, but with the understanding that it could mean a loss of one of the residence, residential units on the first floor.
It could result in the loss of residential.
So, John, you did send a revised plan based on the planning board's recommendation that shows that change already. Who did you send it to, Ricky?
John, I, on the planning board.
Adow yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Rick Costa. I sent the plan to, upon the planning board's recommendations, which they wanted the.
Sir?
Oh, sure. Sure, yeah. It's been a while since I had a mic in my hand, but, so I sent a revised plan with the planning board's recommendations. They wanted to see a transom window on top of that wall, so that wall wasn't left completely blank, it didn't look like a brick wall. So they wanted to see a transom window, and they wanted the front door moved to the right-hand side to give it a different type of a look, which they felt historical would like and the planning board recommended. So I did send that updated elevation.
I'm having trouble downloading, because I don't have a connection to the internet.
Nevertheless.
But as long as you understand that that.
It should be there. Oh, there it is.
No, that's, oh, there it is, yep.
Yeah, so they, they, to be honest, I think they were right, I think they were correct, because the building looked like it was a, like a wall there. So I think their recommendation was to, they wanted to see a transom window, and they wanted to see this door not on the corner, they wanted to see this door to the right-hand side, and I think they were right, I think it was the correct recommendation.
And it looks like you're also moving the electric meters.
I, I can't, I couldn't commit to that, I told them, because 1-800-NATIONAL-GRID. It's like, if I wish I had control over it, so if I can put the meters in the basement, we're going to put everything in the basement, but as National Grid, they have different rules now for gas and electric, and they sometimes like things outside for some weird reason, but if we can put everything in the basement, we will do so.
There's no amenities or anything like that in the building, like laundry room?
You have, you do have a coin-up, you do have a coin-up laundry.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to work with, we're going to work with Inspeccional Services on trying to put some kind of laundry in the basement, hasn't been finalized yet, but we will try. All the other buildings do have laundries.
Any questions before I open it up?
And are they currently fully occupied now, all of the rooms?
My understanding, and the owner is in the audience, that their rooming house is occupied, it goes, you know, some people month-to-month, some people, he rents a room, then someone comes in, but it is a constant activity rooming house, and I even think there's some tenants in the audience, so yeah, there is, it is an active rooming house.
So will they be relocated?
Well, the building has to be.
Doing their renovations, or?
So, we're going to need time to do, you know, construction drawings and submittals and so forth, so we'll certainly, if this does move forward, talk to the tenants and work with them to find them time, to find an alternate place, we've done that in the other rooming houses, but essentially, you've got to get the whole building, it's got to be gutted, so, but it's, we have time for, between construction drawings, building permits, approvals and so forth, and to work with them and that allocation of time, so they don't just get a notice and leave tomorrow.
So they're not displaced?
You know, and again, this is a rooming house, it's not a long-term placement home for apartments. Thank you.
Right, that's, that's beneficial, because it's transient.
Correct.
It comes and goes, so you could have that stop, stop in mind prior to construction.
Absolutely.
And I think it also brings with the residential unit some stability in the area as well, because it's historical, but it's also life, so it's kind of a nice building of that downtown priority area.
And I think that was Tom Ambroseino's initiative, when he, when, when my client was, you know, looking at all these rooming houses, to try to bring that back, so we bring the corridor back to Broadway, and.
Talk into your microphone.
And that worked, and the other buildings, and it's brought residences to downtown that didn't exist before, with, you know, a better, when I say a better-built rooming house and compliant and people feel safe in, to want to go and live in, and that's what he's trying to do with this building, and I think this is probably one of the last ones left that he has not bought and converted. Thank you.
I'm going to open this to the public, Arthur, any questions? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this matter? This will be your last opportunity. Feel free to come up and say, sure, come on out, introduce yourself and tell us what you think, and give your address, please, and tell us what you think.
How you doing? My name is Louis Cruz, and, you know, I'm one of the tenants that lives in that, in that, in that building, and I'm worried, because, you know, I'm, money-wise, I don't, you know, I don't know where to go if I'd be thrown out of there, and I want to know if we're going to be relocated, and what was, what was going to happen to us, you know, and it's going to be winter, and, you know, right now, I'm worried, I'm worried, I can't go to sleep, you know, I can't go to sleep thinking about this, what's going to happen to us, and it's a lot of us in there with needs, you know, and we don't got money like that to, to, to go and find an apartment, you know? I struggle finding this place. I was in the street in Mass Ave, in the street, and I came here, and I relocated in my life, you know, it's, some people there, you know, it's true, you know, it's not, you know, 100% every, every high class, but some people are there are serious, they work, you know, some people work, some people can't afford an apartment, and it worries me, you know? I don't want to be in the street, that's all, you know, have consideration, that's all I, I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak? Sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rafael LaRoya. Sorry.
That's okay.
Real simple, most of us in the building are there because of the low rent and the affordability, myself. I'm an ironworker, I'm hurt, so the money that I make in a month, that I used to make in a week, now I make in a month, it makes you very limited to where we're going. Our concerns, there's three of us that have cats, my little old man, most places will tell you, no animals, without, you know, one, one apple ruins it for the rest. Some of us are really disciplined and organized, we're by ourselves, the only thing I have in my life is my cat, we've been together forever. Our concern is, yes, things have to be done, moved up, out with the old, in with the new, we're great. Everyone that I've spoken to, our fear is, we don't have the money to just walk away. Let's say the owners decide to, you guys got 30 days, you got to go, bye, where do we go? Without this, we can't really afford it. Besides that, if we have our pet, most places will tell you, no, and we're not going to put him to death, because we can't find. It's a worry about four of our, of the tenants, myself included. My one thing is, how about giving us a little assistance, either relocating us, or giving us the assistance that we need to find a place? It'd be simple, you know, one hand washes the other, but to get dumped out, and then we don't know where to go, that's our greatest concern. Most of the people that live in the building, that's their biggest fear, not knowing, okay, now what do we do, you know, out of nowhere, you know? There are, there's a fear of being told, we can't do nothing for you, you got to find something for yourself. Oops, thank you.
Turn off your phone. Turn off your phone. Tim, is there anyone else who wishes to, that's okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Come on in, sir.
It would Rizzo owner, they're all short-term rentals, and they rent by the week and stuff, but I'm selling it because I can't do it no more. I've worked there 40 years, and it's gotten to me, so I can't, otherwise, I would never sell it.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Yeah, thank you.
Could you, could you state your name, please?
Rizzo.
Rizzo? Okay.
It would Rizzo owner.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
Hello, I'm James Kyle, I've been a resident in Chelsea 50 years. I went to school here, St. Rose, Wayne School, Schuylkill School, I'm in the rooming house because it's what I can afford. I'm 60 years old, I'm basically waiting to be evicted into the street. Eight, what's a down payment now? $4,000 for us last security. I'm just going to go to work and go home, stay in the house, and if I have a problem, I'm done. It's just, I'm basically just waiting to live in the street. That's enough, I can't even talk.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? I'm going to close the public participation portion of this, just, I don't mean to sound callous in the least, what you said is all compelling, and I don't agree, but it's not something that we get to weigh as the zoning board. Hopefully, there's some, Anthony, do you want to speak to this?
I can attest that.
Talk into my microphone.
If Mr. Costa purchased property, nobody's, the goal is not to throw somebody out, 30 days. 30 days is how you start the process statutory to send a notice out, but he works with, almost every time, with all the tenants, to give them time and allocation to find a suitable housing and so forth. And remember, he has not purchased this property yet, so we're not, this is something that's not happening tomorrow. It's subject to what happens today and moving forward, so, and construction documents, so there's time here to work with tenants, to try to find housing and help to find housing and whatnot, but again, and he certainly, he's done it in the past, because I represented him on multiple evictions in the past, work with tenants and, and give them a time period so they can find it, and waiving rents, so they can save money to put for first and last month, moving forward, so this is something he does. So it benefits them, and it benefits him and them, because he stays in Chelsea, he loves Chelsea, he does a lot in Chelsea, so he doesn't want to build a reputation that, hey, I'm throwing you out and call it a day. That's not what he does. I mean, he spends money on these buildings, but more importantly, he lives by his name. So I know that's not a consideration, but I will tell you, this is, that he does consider these tenants, and he tries to work with them, if he does close on this property and this does happen, it's not going to be like tomorrow, they're out, we'll work with them, to try to, you know, give them time, that's reasonable for everybody, to help them find an apartment, and then if means, you know, I can't speak now about waiving rent, but a portion of realages and so forth, and, and for a period of time, so they can use that money to find something else, that's what he does, that's what he's done in the past. You know, I can't speak moving forward, but that's what I've, I've experienced, as far as what he does. Correct, Rick? Thank you.
John, does the planning department have any questions?
No, we have conditions, though.
Conditions? Would you like to share what those would be, before we go through the variance procedures?
Standard conditions is applicable, a design review, a lighting plan, address concerns with the historical commission, no lease, sublease or rental within 12 months, and tenants not eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program.
So what you're saying is that we, you, that no longer be a month-to-month rental?
Well, my understanding is that's not what is proposed.
He does, he does one years.
Pardon?
He does one year, one-year leases.
You want one-year leases? Okay.
That's what he does, that's what he does in all of us.
Okay, are you comfortable with those conditions?
You're aware of those conditions, right? One-year lease.
The conditions that John just articulated, are you okay with those?
How come we can't participate in the, in the parking program?
It's in ordinance in the city.
Oh, it's in, it's in ordinance?
You're not, you're not providing any parking spaces, if you get relief for off-street parking, you can't get resident sticker parking.
Yes.
Oh, they can't get a sticker?
Yeah, that's right.
John, what are the, what are the variances here for? John, what are the, what are the variances here for?
There should be dimensional regulation, the side yard.
It's for, um...
Rear yard.
Your, it's a change in non-conform, non-conforming structure with extension of the non-conformities. I'm sorry, the, both the rear yard and the, and the side yard.
Open space.
And then usable, minimum usable open space, no change of water structure. And then requirement for a variance because they, because they're increasing non-conformities.
Okay. Variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Yes, a, as I stated, this property is an historical property and it's already built. It's still in the same footprint. It's not, there's nothing we can do to, to alter what's already built there. So it's not like we're altering the topography and whatnot, but this, it's an existing building. It's only changing the use of what's inside that building that's coming for the board. So in, I cited that, that it'd be a hardship to rip the building down and make it within the dimensional regulation requirement.
We're not at the hardships part yet, one at a time. We have to go through them one at a time.
Okay, which are we doing?
We just did the first one. No, no, I mean, no, one of the conditions, you walked into, you moved into hardships. We're not talking about, we're talking about, you're asking for this because the building is the building.
Yeah, I apologize because in, in the first part, it talks about hardship too. On the soil condition.
Jen, that's number two.
Yeah, no, we, whenever we do on the statute, we talk about, I talk about hardship on it. But nevertheless, the, the, it's all, in relation to those conditions is that the change of, of non-conformity is just changing the use on the inside and that wouldn't be...
This variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. You don't have a rear yard, a side yard, or any of that other stuff because the building is the building and you're not proposing to knock it down.
Correct.
A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or the applicant. Now you talk about hardships.
That would be the hardship. You'd actually literally have to rip the whole building down and be a small, thin little box because you don't meet the rear, you don't meet the rear yard, you don't meet the side yard setback and, and you, there's no way you could have it. It, it, that'd be a financial hardship and not just that, to the city, to everybody as a whole in the neighborhood because they would lose this many units in the neighborhood.
Arthur? Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Correct. And this, this certainly wouldn't be a detriment to the public good. In fact, it'd be, uh, it'd be something that'd benefit the public because now this building would be code compliant. It'd be, uh, as far as units are concerned, they're going to be larger units that were going to have kitchens and bathrooms. Better for the neighborhood and, and hopefully, the, uh, what's happened in the last two years won't happen because you're going to have longer-term tenants that are going to commit it to the city and the neighborhood instead of having, you know, daily or weekly or monthly. So it's certainly not going to be detrimental, if anything, it's going to be more beneficial to the neighborhood.
Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
And the relief certainly can be granted because it's certainly not going to violate the chapter. Even though every application stands on its own, there's nothing that's being done here that would actually be detrimental or, or in violation of the chapter because it's already a pre-existing structure that's in place. And everything that's being done is really just changing the use to make 18 units to be six residential and 12 rooming houses. And now those 12 rooming houses, uh, which still would be in place, would be a far better product than what's currently existing today.
Okay, so you've met all the requirements. Is there a motion on this one? Again, we as the zoning board are looking at a very narrow, something very narrow here, and we have to keep that in mind.
I'll make a motion to accept the special permit and variance for 2023-15-165 Hawthorne Street.
With the, with the conditions articulated by John. Do I have a second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am chairwoman, thank you members of the board.
Next one, 2023-19-78 Engle Ave, Clayton Faraz. Special permit and variance seeking approval for the construction of a two-family dwelling within an existing open lot which does not meet the minimum requirements of lot size and off-street parking.
Yes, hello, thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Uh, Mike Manna here, representing the applicant. We also have the architect and the existing owner here if we have any additional questions at the end for them. Just to run through our PowerPoint here, once it's up.
John's doing double duty today, sir.
Sure, yeah, very busy. There we go. So yes, again, we're, as you mentioned, we're here for a proposed project at Sevigny-Inglewood for a proposed variance and a special permit. Uh, the property is located at the northwestern corner of the city, right at the edge to the city of Everett there at the end of Inglewood Avenue.
John?
Uh, just a quick site history, existing conditions. The lot is currently vacant and is in the R1 residential zoning district, which does permit single and two-family dwellings. The lot predates the city of Chelsea zoning, referenced on a plan from October 1906. The existing lot is 5,753 square feet where the current... Oh, sure. Not a problem.
He's just articulating the conditions. The site, he's just articulating what's up there.
And just referencing the last bullet again there, the lot is undersized at 5,753 square feet where 7,500 square feet is required and 3,500 square feet per unit is required for a two-family. Again, another contextual for the site, the lot is surrounded by development with single and two-family dwellings with similar lot sizes in the area. Again, here is another context. You can see, uh, the lot is angular in shape due to the, uh, location on adjacent to the...
Keep that in mind when we talk about variances.
Correct. Due to the, uh, district boundary with Everett. The project, um, as proposed, is a new two-family dwelling on the vacant lot that would be accessed by a front approaching driveway to a ground-level garage with tandem parking to each unit. Other than lot size, all other applicable zoning requirements would conform, including setbacks, lot coverage, height, and number of stories.
Do you agree with that, John? Other than lot size, that, are there all that does conform?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, as you can see, uh, we'll go through the plans, um, later on the presentation. But again, just looking at the relief required as a variance from the minimum lot size and lot size per dwelling unit per section 34-262 and a special permit for the front approaching driveway to an attached garage with tandem parking per section 34-106. And, uh, just moving forward with the criteria, I think this is the old presentation, but we did provide, uh, updated memorandum that had our revised criterion, and I can go through that with you now just verbally. But given the subject's lot location, um, at the edge of the city and adjacent to Everett, it is our, uh, finding, uh, humbly as the applicant, that the lot is compromised due to circumstance related to lot shape in that the lot does not benefit from a standard rectangular shape. The lot is located again along the city's edge, creating a circumstance in which an angular parcel shape has been created, resulting in the parcel size being substandard for the zoning district.
And it would have been, and if it was this rectangularly done, then it would be the minimum one.
That's what we're showing here, right? If it was rectangularly done with the existing lot frontage at 65 feet and lot depth at 119 and a half feet, you would wind up with a lot of 7,767 square feet, which would have conformed. Therefore, it is our professional opinion that there is a direct correlation between the circumstance of lot shape due to the jurisdictional boundary and the fact that the lot is undersized. We humbly believe that the remedy for the circumstance related parcel shape is therefore a variance from minimum lot size. Further, the lot is different from other vacant lots in the surrounding area as it is the only vacant lot within a quarter-mile radius that is developable apart from being substandard in lot size, as it does not share common ownership with any developed abutting lot within the city of Chelsea. Other lots within the general area that are vacant and substandard in lot size have common ownership with an abutting lot within the city's boundary and are therefore considered merged under the common ownership law. Given the subject lot does not share common ownership with an abutting lot within the city's boundary, this lot is considered developable with the exception to lot size.
And let's not go through, I, we're going to ask you to go through the, if, if what you're doing is sort of setting up the, the criteria, which obviously you are, let's just wait a minute so we can comment. We'll ask you to go through those at the end of, that we've heard, the end of the various requirements so that we can all vote on them because we have to vote on each one of them.
Do you want me to skip those criteria for now and just go through the plans?
Just skip right through that and then we'll go to it at, at that time later on.
So why don't we go through the plans then? We can bring those up. They might be in a different file.
You want the plans?
So here, here you go again. So, um, uh, to the right of the plan sheet is really, should be oriented north. And that is, uh, Inglewood Avenue there where you can see the driveway approaches directly into and in front of the building. Two 12-foot driveways with, uh, pedestrian, uh, separation in the middle. The ultimate, that will be designed with the Department of Public Works as far as the entry and whether that needs to be reduced and flared in a larger pedestrian area in between the two driveways. But right now, it's currently proposed as straight into 12-foot wide driveways.
Are the driveways under the house or is it, am I just not seeing that?
Uh, they're at grade.
The what?
The garage is at grade and the driveways just go straight in, yes. So you can see the two tandem, um...
So that's a garage without a, I'm looking at a garage without the roof on it.
Correct, yeah, you're looking at the garage at street level. Uh, the main entrance into the, uh, both units i- is here with the walkway from the sidewalk. Uh, the, uh, extra area out here beyond the garage will be devoted to the first, or I guess the second floor unit or the first, uh, lower unit on the second level, um, providing their required egress out with a slider out here to the side to their passive recreation area. And you'll see on the next plan that they will also have a third egress out the back via exterior stairway.
He'll be right with this one then.
There's also, uh, proposed to be a landscape buffer on the edge of the property with two trees in the front yard on either side, along with planter beds on either side of the driveway to ensure that no parking occurs on the walkway or anywhere else on the property really delineating and defining that area. Next slide.
I don't have a next slide. There is no next slide.
If it's a PDF, may just have to scroll down.
Was this in your, um, written summary?
No, we submitted a PDF of the submitted plan set separately. That's the presentation.
That's it? So it's not in that?
Yeah, um...
Plot plan?
No, that's just the plot plan.
Site, site plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not seeing it on here. There we go, looks like that's, if you go, there we go. So there is the plan we just discussed, if you go to the next sheet. So again, here's the garage, uh, you can skip this, we kind of went over that already. And then here you go, the first floor, it's, it looks a little bit faded on the screen here, so I apologize. But again, coming in from the, uh, street level first floor where the garage was, you come up the main entry to both units here, entering into the, uh, second floor or the first unit with a living area, three bedrooms, two full bath, a kitchen area to the back. There are two balconies, um, coming off of the unit which are facing west. And then here is the, uh, third egress here out to the back. And then this was the second egress that went down to the area behind the garage. That would be a, a recreation play area for this unit. Moving to the third floor, again, going up the remainder of the stairs from the front into this unit. Similar floor plan, three bedroom, two full bath, kitchen at the back with the balconies and the second egress coming out the back here. Uh, the, uh, property would be meeting the height limit, I believe it's at 34 and a half feet as proposed. Here again, you have the two garages at grade level, the main entrance to the unit here. There will be, uh, vertical siding at the front, horizontal on the sides and the rear. And then, uh, the top half would have a scallop, um, looking siding at the top.
And you've changed it to 79 to accommodate the Everett person?
Correct, yes, yes, that was a request, yes.
Oh, 80?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
So yes, that, we did hear that last time and we, we did say we would, um, uh, change the address to accommodate that request. Moving on, here is a, a view from the rear. So again, you can see the building is offset, um, as you saw in the site plan. So you can see the, the offsets because of that angular shape and circumstance we have on this lot. The two balconies that were referenced, this is facing, uh, west, you have facing east. And then, uh, here you have the egress out from both units to the rear yard. And then here we have the, um, I guess would, this would be the westerly elevation, um, again, with the balconies shown. This, here's where we would have the, uh, horizontal siding and again with the scalloped siding at the top level.
Are these apartments or are they rentals of the owner?
At this point, they're not sure. Um, I believe, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're looking at, uh, a family member moving in at this point and, uh, being one ownership and renting, but in the future, you know, if they decide to condo, that, that may be what happens. And then the opposing side, the easterly side, um, again, with the horizontal siding on the first two floors and the scalloped, um, uh, panels up on the third level. And I believe that might be the end of the, of, of the plans.
Does anybody have any questions? Joe?
With regards to the garage, uh, you have two doors and then it looks like they're tandem parking.
Correct.
Is that for each unit or is, are they sharing?
No, that's for each unit. So one tandem parking would be for the first floor unit and then the opposing for the second unit.
Would you consider putting like, um, like a mirror or light or something to alert people when they're exiting? Because it's tandem, so it looks like they, they park, they go straight in.
Correct, yes.
And then when they're reversing, you know, sometimes you want to proceed with caution.
I don't think that would be a, be a problem, putting up mirrors.
Walking on the side.
Concave mirrors that clearly show anyone walking or backing up, yeah.
I'm going to open this to the, this is the only opportunity one will have to speak on this. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this application? There are being none, I'm closing the public participation portion of the hearing. Now we're going to talk about variances, okay? So we're going to go through, now it gives you, you were, you were going through it, it's just that we have to vote on each one one at a time.
I apologize, you'll have to...
Didn't want you to go through all those words twice.
You'll have to hear me say it again.
That's quite all right, I stopped you halfway through. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning... and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Yes, the subject lot is compromised due to circumstance related to lot shape in that the lot does not benefit from a standard rectangular shape. The lot is located on the city's edge, creates a circumstance in which an angular parcel shape has been created, resulting in the parcel size being substandard for the zoning district. If the lot had been created with an ang, with an, if the lot had not been created with an angular shape to allow for rectangular parcel, a rectangular lot with the current lot frontage of sixty-five feet and the existing lot depth of one hundred and nineteen feet and a half feet would have resulted in a 7,767 square foot lot that would meet the minimum requirement. Therefore, it is our opinion that there is a direct correlation between the circumstance of lot shape due to jurisdictional boundary and the fact that the lot is undersized. The remedy for the circumstance related to parcel shape is therefore a variance from the minimum lot size.
Yes. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
Given the facts of circumstance ascribed in criterion A, that the lot shape and size predate zoning regulations, the properties surrounding the subject lot are located in the R1 district and already developed with single or two-family dwellings, the literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance would create a hardship in that the lot could not share the same opportunity as other developed lots in the city. But not for granting of the variance, the lot could not be used as its intended purpose for residential use as currently zoned. Further, the abutting lot to the west is located within the boundaries of the city of Everett and the abutting lots to the east and south. Although located in the city of Chelsea, contain less than 7,500 square feet of lot area and have existing homes sighted where the ability to purchase additional lot area and reconfiguration of lot lines with adjacent lots is not available and would create a non-conformity. These limitations create a hardship in that the lot could not be developed consistent with the zoning designation if not for granting of the variance.
Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Yes, as referenced previously, the lot is located in the R1 residential zoning district and is proposed to construct a two-family dwelling consistent with the surrounding uses in the immediate neighborhood. The lot is accessed by an existing public right-of-way and would have access to connect to the existing utilities and infrastructure. Given the proposed use would be consistent with the current permitted uses in the ordinance and comparable with the surrounding neighborhood and that the lot has access to existing utilities and infrastructure, the proposed project would not create a substantial detriment to the public good.
Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
The proposed use of the lot as a two-family is consistent with the permitted uses, again, in the R1 zoning district and the uses in the immediate neighborhood. The proposed development meets required setbacks, lot coverage, and number of stories in the district, furthering the ordinance's purpose to provide adequate light and air and prevent overcrowding of land. Therefore, it is our opinion that the project would be consistent with this section of the ordinance.
Okay, you met all those criteria. John, does the planning department have any recommendations or proposed conditions?
Yes. Standard conditions as applicable, design review, no lease, sublease, rental of less than twelve months, and occupant's not eligible to participate in the resident sticker parking program.
And is that, and let me just, so they're not, because even though they have the two parking spaces, it's because it's tandem?
Tandem, they're getting relief from the requirement for a tandem, any relief for parking triggers that.
Can I just understand the lease condition again, just so I make sure clear that property owner is aware of that?
That the lease cannot be for less than one, lease or rental cannot be for less than one year.
There's no short-term lease.
No month, month, no.
No B and Bs.
Yes, okay, yeah, you're good, okay.
Are you okay with those? Okay, do we have a motion? Yep, Marilyn?
To approve case number 2023-19-78 Inglewood Avenue, Clayton Faris, for special permit and variance seeking approval for the construction of a two-family dwelling with the standard conditions that.
Which John articulated, yeah. Do I have a second? Arthur, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Do I have, so we've had a request, we have to make a motion to, somebody propose a motion to move 2023-20 Crest Ave, Hillside Ave and Summit Ave to next month, do we have a motion to move that? Arthur, second, Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I will not be here, so keep that in mind. Bye-bye, thank you.
Bye-bye.
John, is there anything else before we make a motion to adjourn?
No, other than, as I told you earlier, at one of the previous meetings, we talked about the Forbes appeal. And that the.
Are you going to talk into the mic?
And that the.
Do you want to talk into, no, you want to talk into the mic, John.
I'm sorry, no.
Are we done? No, we haven't voted out yet, we haven't.
Okay.
Well, let's make a motion, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Arthur, all in favor, aye. All right, Ricky, you can turn it off.